Thank you all for coming tonight. Before we begin our meeting, would you bow with me in a word of prayer? We come tonight united in our work for the city and community we call home. As a council, may we be ever mindful in our thoughts, reasonable in our deliberations, and careful with our decisions. We are grateful for those working on our behalf in Washington, Austin, and our county, and especially to so many of our citizens serving unselfishly to check on their neighbors, feed those who are hungry, and see to those in need. We are thankful for our healthcare workers, our police and fire responders, our city and county employees, and our elected officials working behind the scenes on our behalf. May we all be kind and generous to one another in the coming days. Amen.
Amen.
Call the meeting of March 17th, 2020 to order. We will first have a recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In our efforts to be mindful of gatherings at this time, we will postpone portions of our agenda tonight. So I hope you will understand, we have decided to temporarily postpone those things that are not time-sensitive. So, we will postpone our community recognition. We have no one that has signed up for open forum. So, moving to Agenda Number Five, if council wants to remove anything from the consent agenda for discussion, and if not, Chair would entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion when we pass the consent agenda as it's written?
Okay, move in second. Did we approve the consent agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. For our regular agenda, we are going to first receive a report and consider accepting the 2018-19 annual audit. Ms. Kerbo first, or Mr. Rogers is going to go ahead? Okay, Mr. Rogers. Good evening.
Good evening. Good right there. Clayton? Excuse me. Thank you all for having me tonight. My name is Clayton Rogers. I'm with Patilla Brown in Hill out of Waco, and I'm here to go over the results of your annual audit for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2019. So, just wanted to go over the results of our audit, and any significant things that came out of it, as well as go over the highlights of your comprehensive annual financial report. I thought I would start off by discussing the little blue letter you have bound in front of you. This is a communication to you guys, under our audit standards, for a lot of mostly boilerplate things that we are required to communicate to you. And this letter would also include discussion and disclosure of any major problems that we had during the audit. Spoiler alert, there were no major problems. Good news for everyone. I won't go over this in the interest of time in great detail. It does discuss things, for example, our independence requirements, discusses the fact that we did assist in drafting this comprehensive annual financial report, as many accounting firms do for a lot of governments across the state, and some various things such as disclosures, adjustments, things of that nature. And as I go through this, if you guys have any questions, feel free to stop me and we can go through those. So, going straight into the CAFER, as it's called, I'd like to start off on page Roman And this is the, you may be familiar with this, the Government Finance Officers Association of America, or GFOA, has a certificate for excellence in financial reporting, and your CAFER for last year, 2018, did receive that award. It's the ninth year in a row that Nacogdoches has gotten this award, and we fully expect that it will again for this year qualify to receive that award as well. I think it speaks a lot to the quality of information that your finance office has available, and their dedication to get something usable and very understandable made available to the public. So, moving right into page one, is the whole reason we are here, the independent auditors' report. So, we were engaged to do two things. We were supposed to do the audit, and then report at the end over the financial statements. So, we came and did our audit over the past few months, and this report summarizes officially speaking everything that we did and what the results were. So, it begins by saying that management of the city is responsible for the financial statements and everything that's in it, and discusses some of the professional standards that we have to comply with as part of that audit. And then at the top of page two, it has our opinion, which, good news, it is an, what we call an unmodified opinion, which you might know as a clean opinion. So, of the four types of opinions that we can render, this is what you might call the A+. That's the highest level of assurance that we can provide. So, excellent job there. Moving into the next page, page four, is the Management's Discussion and Analysis, which we like to think of this as the CliffsNotes version of everything that's in this report. If you were going to start here, and you wanted to know kind of a bird's eye view of anything that's kind of happened with the city financially for this year, this Management's Discussion and Analysis is a good place to find it. So, it starts off with some highlights. For example, the third bullet point down, you will notice that the city's governmental funds, your general fund, debt service, all of those types of funds, in total increased fund balance for a total of about $600,000. And it discusses some of those reasons. Your property tax revenues went up, the city's sales tax revenues went up. And y'all might also remember the, I think it happened maybe kind of at the beginning of 2019, when y'all had that extra payment that was recorded into the retirement account through TMRS. That was an additional revenue and contribution to your plan of a little over $2 million. One thing that's nice about the MDNA, if you turn to the next page, is that this is the one place in the CAFER where you can see this year's information presented with last year's, and see how things increased, decreased, improved, deteriorated. I think all across the board, generally, the city's funds showed increases, especially in the general fund and in the water and sewer funds. You can see, if you flip to page nine, down at the bottom, that table shows a comparison year-over-year of the city's main revenue sources. And so, again, a lot of the increase in that position that the city saw was due to property taxes, sales taxes, and that TMRS contribution of $2 million. So, if we jump into page 12, is the beginning of the actual financial statements. And these first two financial statements are what we call the government-wide financial statements, and those are the entire activities of the city at a snapshot. So, the governmental activities is all of your police, fire, all of your special revenue funds, debt service, whereas business-type activities are those types of things that are expected to cover their own operating costs, water and sewer, sanitation, and airport. You'll notice that all of the net positions down at the bottom of the page, that's what's left over, basically assets minus liabilities, and those are all positive numbers, they all increased from last year, which are all positive things. Certain accrued liabilities that don't really have any offsetting assets, like the city's pension liabilities and its post-employment benefit liabilities, those generally increased, but your net position increased right along with it, and that's a very good thing. So, if we look at page 16, this is where we begin your government fund financial statements, which are probably what you're most used to seeing in your monthly or quarterly financials. These are presented not including all of those long-term items, debt, capital assets, it's more revenues and expenses and all of those near-term type things. So, as I mentioned before, down at the bottom, the general fund, that unassigned fund balance, did increase from last year, and I think one of the useful measurements or ratios that you can look at is seeing how much that reserve will take you in terms of the ratios actually unassigned fund balance over expenditures. And so, it turns out that roughly that works out in here, that the city has about five months in general fund fund balance, five months of expenditures, which generally speaking, in our experience around Texas, that's right where it ought to be. GFOA recommends, I believe, about three and a half months. Generally, so five months is a good place to be. It means you guys have reserves in the case of if revenues had a gap, or a shortfall, or something like that. We can go into page 20, which these are then your, what we call them the proprietary funds. This is that business-type activities, water, sewer, sanitation, and airport. And this one actually bleeds into the next two pages, and on that last page, you can see the net position amounts for all of these funds, which again, all increased from prior The water and sewer funds specifically, if we looked at that pretty large unrestricted number down there, everything that's left over after capital assets, after all of those debt and long-term liabilities, it winds up being several years' worth of operating costs that are in unrestricted net position, and a lot of that does have to do with some of the incentives that you guys had, wanting to store up some reserves so that you can make some of those capital improvements to get water to rate users, rate payers, without issuing lots and lots of debt. But you guys do have quite a lot of reserves in the water and sewer fund, as it turns So, if we jump into page 29, I won't go into a lot of detail here, this is, these are the notes to the financial statements. Every single financial statement that was, that just proceeded, has that little note at the bottom. The notes are an integral part. Well, these are those notes, and whereas the MDNA was very much the CliffsNotes version, this is the book. Pretty much any number in these financial statements that you would want to know something about, these notes have information on it. How things are measured, how they were recorded, significant changes that were made throughout the year, lots of information about your pension and benefit liabilities, debt, all of those types of things. So then behind that, we have a number of combining schedules, combining statements. One that I'd like to point out in particular, if we jump to page, where did it go? Some of the information in the financial statements up front is more compressed or condensed, and back here toward the back of the report, you can find lots of detail. So, your two, those two, we call them internal service funds, that provide service to the city's own funds, those are presented here. And one of the things I'd like to point out, your health insurance fund, y'all are always trying to keep a specific reserve in that. If we look on the next page over, it did decrease from a little less than 1.5 million to just over $1 million. A lot of that was due, if I remember, to several large health claims that were paid out, but the reserves were able to pay that, and the reserves in the insurance funds were, are still stable relatively. So, I'd like to jump back to page 122, skipping over the statistical section, that's a lot of the comparative information presents the last 10 years of data, about lots of different financial trends and debt trends, things like that throughout the city. On page 122, I would like to highlight a fairly significant change for the city this year, was the city was subject to what's known as a single audit. And so, the single audit was an extra thing we did that is required by federal law because the city expended more than $750,000 of federal money during the year. And so, when that's triggered, we did it as part of our financial audit, and what we essentially have to do is, this is a schedule of all the federal money that the city spent during the year, and we are required to look into this and pick several of these programs based on certain criteria, and dig down into the details down at the transaction level to see, did the city comply with all of the federal regulations that come with this money? And so, on the next page over, page 124, about halfway down the page, you can see the two major programs that we audited at that, down in the transactions detail. The city's equitable sharing program, which was accumulated over several years, and then a lot of capital outlays were spent during the year, so we audited that, as well as the city's airport improvement program, which was essentially improvements that were made by Tech dot. So, as part of that audit, what we were charged with doing, again, very similar to the financial statement audit, is to do the audit and then report over what we found, and that is in another letter, which, backpedaling, is on page 120. Very similar to our audit report up front, we were required to render an opinion on, did the city comply with all of those federal compliance requirements? And again, at the bottom of the page, very good news, the city did, in our findings, comply with all of those different compliance requirements over those funds. I mentioned this specifically because the city has not had a single audit in several years. I believe FY16 was the last single audit that the city had, and so, this was kind of a big change for the current year. Proceeding that, I only mentioned that in passing is the, another letter that we're required to put out under government auditing standards, describing some of our testing over controls, and some of the compliance with laws and regulations, like the Public Funds Investment Act was under the scope of our audit. And so, then it basically says, this is what, these are the types of things that we do, and this is what we found. So, I will mention the one, the letter does mention one finding that we did have for fiscal year 19, that I'd like to bring to your attention and discuss briefly on page We used a lot of fairly technical auditing terms in here, but I think the plain, the plain English version is discussing the city's payroll processes. Generally, there are certain things, certain kinds of duties that should generally be segregated, that it's in the best interest of good operation if one person does this thing and the other person does that thing, and these two things are not done by the same individual. Well, what we find with a lot of governments that are maybe a little bit smaller, that are not, you know, the city of Houston that probably has 50 people doing payroll, when you have those smaller departments, it's much more difficult to segregate those duties. And so, with smaller governments, it's very, very normal to have some overlap of those duties. What we wound up bringing to your attention here was that during 19, there was some changes in personnel, and an individual left employment with the city, that ultimately caused one individual for a lot of the year to wind up performing a lot of both of those duties themselves, specifically human resources type functions, like setting people's pay rates, setting up new employees, and then also the running payroll every two weeks for the year, and that those are things that we generally think, there's some things that could go wrong, either intentionally or otherwise, if one person's able to do both. So, we think it's best in general, either that those two duties are totally segregated, or if that's not possible, which is often the case, can we have some type of, have somebody totally separate from this process, reviewing what they're doing throughout the year? And so, what I'd like to mention, a couple of things about that, we bring it to your attention, there's two types of reportable findings that we have, material weaknesses and significant deficiencies. You could think of them as the bad and the less bad. This is definitely the less bad. And to that point, more importantly really, we did, we increased the amount of testing we did over those payroll amounts throughout the year, and we did not find anything that we considered to be a problem, or evidence that anything did go wrong with this process. This is more of a, here is a possibility or a gap where something could potentially And so, with that, we discussed that with management, with Pam and her staff, and they are looking at all options as far as potentially making some type of written policy or procedures in place that maybe could increase that type of review to where, even though you have a little bit of that overlapping of those duties, that you can check throughout the year, and that they can make sure that everything's happening as it should. But again, just to reiterate over that, we performed several detailed procedures, tests of controls, along with a number of detailed, more analytical procedures, and we did not find anything to think that the payroll amounts in here were wrong, or that anything went awry. So, overall, again, financial statement audit, clean opinion, as good as it gets. The single audit, clean opinion, as good as it gets. And so, with that, we really appreciate Pam and her staff and everything that they were able to get for us. They've been very transparent, very forthcoming, and have helped us a lot with providing us all the information that we needed, answering our questions, and being available for all of those types of things. So, we really appreciate them and the great job that they're doing, because this is not, this comprehensive report that's in front of you is not required in this level of detail, and it's not required to have someone else like GFOA look at it and send lots of nitpicky questions about it, but they do, and they received that award for the last nine years in a row, and we think it makes a really, it makes the report much more readable, accurate, and usable as good information.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. We're going to see if there's any public comment, and then we may ask you to, if you just want to stand aside, or you can go back, and then council may have some questions for you. Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment about the presentation about our annual audit? No? Okay. Council, any questions or comments for Mr. Rogers?
You mentioned that we got the unmodified opinion.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any sense within your firm how often that happens? What percentage of the municipalities receive that opinion, or is it pretty prevalent?
It is definitely prevalent. I think in general, most finance staffs will expect a clean opinion, but it's certainly not guaranteed until we get to this point.
On page 124, it mentions about two-thirds of the way down. Audittee qualified as a low risk. Audittee, is it because of the findings on page 125 that we are not low-risk?
No, sir. And actually, that's a great question. It is, the low-risk audittee is a criteria specified by the federal government, and there's about five criteria, and you have to meet all of them to be considered low-risk, and the fact that the city has not had a single audit in three years automatically qualified them as high-risk. So, that was why it was considered, y'all were considered a high-risk audit. The only difference that that causes, generally speaking, is if you look at page 122, that total expenditures down at the bottom of $1,186,000. If an entity is low-risk, we have to select programs, dollar amounts equalling 20% of that total, whereas if the entity's high-risk, we have to pull 40%.
Page one, back to page 125.
Yes, sir.
Dual work operations, et cetera. We're not saying that there was any inaccurate information in those records, but it's a possibility, right?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
In other words, we could hire, it'd be an opportunity to hire another personnel or payroll person.
That's certainly one option that could be taken.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have anything? Neither do I. Thank you very much, Mr. Rogers. So, now, if there's no further discussion, Chair will entertain a motion to receive the report and accept the audit.
I'll make a motion to receive the report and accept the audit, as the agenda's written.
I'll second.
Okay, move in second. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you.
Safe travels home. We are going to postpone Agenda Item Number Eight. Agenda Item Number Nine is a public hearing to consider ordinance amending the boundaries of a zoning district within the city of Nacogdoches. And Ms. Chafin, good evening.
Thank you, Lena Chafin, Planning Director. Tonight's request is to rezone approximately, where's?
Thank you.
Thank you. Threw me off just a second. I got it, all right. Rezone approximately .14 acre, 14 acres from R2 Single Family to R3 Two Family for Lot Six of the Habitat for Humanity Ritchie Street Edition. The property is currently vacant, and the applicant intends to develop the property with duplexes if the rezoning is approved. Properties to the north and south are developed with mobile homes. Property to the east is vacant, and to the west is God Tell Ministries. The area includes a mix of residential zoning districts, including R3 Two Family to the north, R2 Single Family to the east and south, and R4 Multi Family to the west, and staff finds that the proposed rezoning of R3 Two Family is compatible with other zoning patterns in the area. The future land use plan map designates this area a single-family residential, which is described in the comprehensive plan as conventional, single-family detached dwellings, and this definition also includes duplexes. The rezoning request also furthers the goal of growth inward, as outlined in the comprehensive plan, which encourages infill development where appropriate, planning for mixing and or separation of land use types, and promoting growth where adequate infrastructure already exists. Therefore, staff finds that the request is consistent with the future land use plan, and also furthers the goals and objectives of the 2003 comprehensive plan. As a reminder, when reviewing application for zone change, the following conditions shall be considered, as outlined on your screen. These include compatibility with adjacent land uses, providing for the orderly growth and development of surrounding property, adequate infrastructure such as utilities, roads, and drainage, the design of drives and parking, prevention of nuisances, of nuisances such as adequate lighting, sufficient landscaping, and the proposed use being in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Therefore, based on the findings in the staff report, and as outlined in the presentation, a staff finds that the request does meet the review criteria as outlined, and recommends approval of the zone change for the subject property from R2 Single Family to R3 Two Family. Staff did send out nine notices to property owners within the 200-foot notification area. We, as of today, we haven't received any contacts regarding the request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this item at their regular meeting on March 9th with 4 to 0. I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Since this is a public hearing, is there anyone that'd like to speak against this zoning change? Is there anyone that would like to speak for the proposed zoning change? Okay, public hearing is now closed. Council, questions or comments for Ms. Chafin? Counsel, questions or comments for Ms. Chafin?
None, me.
No? Okay. Thank you very much. You can stay there if you want.
Yes, I will.
Doing the next one, the next item also.
Same with some steps.
So, uh, Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, Agenda Item Number Nine. Is it, is it written?
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded, that we, uh, approve Agenda Item Number Nine as written. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Ten, public hearing considering the ordinance approving a request for a revision to the specific use permit.
Thank you. Uh, tonight's request is to amend a specific use permit for, uh, property located at 321 Old Tyler Road. The specific use permit was, uh, approved in 2011, um, to occupy the existing residential structure as a fraternity house. The, uh, zoning ordinance says that no building premise or land use under a specific use permit may be modified or enlarged, uh, without amending the original specific use permit obtained. Uh, so this request is a revision to that original specific use permit specifically to allow for the addition of a meeting facility on the site. The, um, like I stated, the approved specific use permit was limited to the occupancy of the existing structure on the site. The proposed addition, shown in dark gray on your screen on the, um, site plan, is a detached facility that includes approximately 738 square feet of assembly area and associated parking. The subject area is Zone R4 Multi-Family. Property to the east and south is Zone I1 Light Industrial, and property to the north and west is Zone Plan Development District. Um, this Plan Development District received concept plan approval in 2002 for a restaurant and some residential uses, um, but has since expired. The future land use plan does call for a single-family residential for the majority of this area and property to the west, and, uh, property to the east is designated as rural. Um, this is most likely due to the amount of significant floodplain on this property, uh, whi- which you'll see in the following screen. Um, although the future land use plan does designate this area as residential, there is, um, a large portion of the property and surrounding property that is Zone Multi-Family and general business, and the amendment to the specific use permit will not, um, change the permitted uses that are allowed under the underlying zoning district. Um, as stated, there is a small portion of the property that is located in the 100 and 500-year floodplain area as shown in the southeast portion of the property on your screen. Um, however, with this amendment, the applicant isn't proposing any improvements in this area. They're proposing to maintain it in it, in its natural condition. Um, as a reminder again, when reviewing an application for zone change or a specific use permit, following conditions shall be considered, and they conclude compatibility with land uses, adequate infrastructure, sufficient landscaping, and of course, um, being in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Uh, fraternity houses are often met with objections due to concerns with excessive noise, vehicles, um, poor maintenance of the property. Since the approval of the specific use permit in 2011, there have been a number of noise complaints received by the MacAdoches Police Department. The majority of those were between, uh, 2012 and 2014. I think the last one was actually in 2017. So, in the past recent years, there, there haven't been any complaints specifically for noise, um, for the subject property. The applicant has stated that one of the reasons for the noise complaints is that because of the size of the existing structure, they're forced to host a lot of their meetings outdoors, which can create excessive noise. And so the intent is to provide a new facility to hold all of their future me- meetings, therefore eliminating some of, um, some of the potential nuisances for the area. In regards to maintenance of the property, the city does have abatement codes that prohibit accumulation of trash and tall weeds, and since the approval of the specific use permit, there haven't been any, um, code complaints for the subject property. There are currently nine residents living on site, and, um, as stated, the site plan does propose approximately 738 square feet of meeting area, and this requires a total of 54 off-street parking spaces. The applicant, um, is proposing to provide 27 of those 54 parking spaces on site and, uh, provide the rest of them utilizing excess parking found on the Annie Passe's and Clear Springs Restaurants nearby, uh, through a shared parking agreement, which they provided to staff. Uh, the shared parking agreement does satisfy the off-street parking requirements, but the distance does exceed the maximum permitted by the zoning ordinance, which is 500 feet. Um, staff did wanna point out that if the proposed facility, as shown on your screen, were actually built at the 20-foot building setback, then the distance requirement would be met. However, the applicant is, um, attempting to preserve as much mature vegetation and, and trees on the side as possible, and the proposed location does require the least disturbance of the property. The facility will also only be used, um, by fraternity members and will not be open to the general public, and so staff does believe that that does offset the distance requirements. Um, when we presented this, and this is just a, a map showing the fraternity area and then the location of the off-site parking area. When we presented this item to the Planning and Zoning Commission on March 9th, there was a lot of discussion between the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff, specifically with concerns related to the pedestrian access and, uh, people traveling by foot from the off-site parking area to the fraternity house, especially at night. And they asked staff to, uh, go back and do some research about, um, additional measures that could be put in place or conditions that could be placed on the specific use permit, including pedestrian signage, and they wanted to look at lighting in the area. So staff did go out and conduct some site photos at night, um, to give the council a better idea of, of what that would look like, and then we looked at some poten- potential signage, and I'll show you those photos in just a minute. But I wanna show you this map that we put together. This shows the, the, the streetlights that are located in that area, and those are shown with the yellow circles, and so you can see there are streetlights provided, and they do meet the minimum spacing requirements, um, as outlined in our ordinances. And so on the left side of your screen, you'll see a key map that shows where the, these photos were taken in relation to, um, the streetlights. The photo on the bottom is actually taken, and these, all these photos were taken last week around 8:00 PM. Um, the photo on the bottom is actually taken at the driveway of the fraternity house, and the photo on the top is taken at the robo-tracks. And so you can see, um, there is quite a bit of visibility and lighting in this area. Uh, the, that next photo is just a, and for some reason, I don't know why, the key map is, is offset, but this next photo is just a few yards further, um, and so you can see there's still a, a minimum level of maintained visibility and lighting. Um, this next photo is about midway between the driveway for the fraternity house and the closest shared parking area. This is the darkest section of Old Tyler Road between the two, but there was still fairly good, the, good visibility. This was taken, um, out of my car window, but I had my headlights turned off, so it was as if you were walking down the street. And this is, um, right whenever you get to the parking area, you can see it's very well-lit and highly visible, and this is at that parking area. So this just gives you an idea of context and the experience of someone walking from the fraternity house to the shared parking and vice versa. Um, this is, uh, poten- potential signage that the city already employs, um, and these could be easily accommodated within the right-of-way that currently exists along Old Tyler Road, um, and we were able to verify this with engineering services, and so if the council decided to impose a condition for pedestrian signage, this is what it might look like. Uh, staff also put together a parking compares, uh, a parking comparison of other college towns in East Texas that require, uh, parking ratios for fraternity and sorority houses to simplify some context. Um, all of the other cities did include minimum required parking for residents that live on site, or bedrooms, or a combination of the two. Um, a few of them didn't require any additional parking for meeting rooms, and some of them required parking for residents and then a percentage of the actual house members overall, and then some of them were for the total gross area of the building versus just the meeting facility. And so, at the top row, you see MacAdoches highlighted in yellow, and then based on parking ratios for other cities, that last column on the right is what would be required for the, for the same development type in those areas, just to give you an idea of how we compare to other college towns in East Texas. Uh, we also put together a diagram that, um, just visually illustrates the meeting area occupancy based on the exception of the parking ratio. So our parking ratio for fraternity houses assumes, uh, one person per 16 square feet, and so the red rectangles represent 54 people standing in the meeting area approximately two, two feet apart. So it just gives you an idea of kind of the, the density of the occupancy that our current parking regulations require, uh, for these types of uses. So therefore, based on the findings in the staff report and the presentation, staff does agree that the pedestrian access, uh, between the shared parking and the fraternity is not ideal, um, especially because there's no dedicated sidewalk or pedestrian access. Um, then pedestrians have to cross robo-tracks in order to get from one place to the other. Um, however, due to the nature of the use, I think these can be mitigated with some additional pedestrian signage, um, if council were to, uh, were to choose to place that as a condition. Um, staff did send out eight property owner notices to, um, people within the 200-foot notification area. We did receive one phone call with just general questions regarding the request. Um, again, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval for to zero with no conditions, but expressly wanted us to communicate to council their concerns about the pedestrian safety, um, and requested that you consider that during your deliberations. And that concludes my request. Uh, there, we do have some representatives from the fraternity house, and the applicant is also available for questions.
Uh, since this is a public hearing, we will now open that public hearing. For those, is there anyone here speaking against, uh, this, uh, use permit? Is there anyone here that would like to speak for the specific use permit? Now's your time. Okay. Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Uh, counsel, questions?
Not so much a question, but I do have a concern.
Okay.
I wouldn't have an issue with the 500-feet
Mm-hmm.
distance. But the walk from the parking lot to that location, especially at night, would not be a safe walk. Because there are no sidewalks. And, and, and that street is small, I don't know, it meets the standard, I'm pretty sure, but, but that street itself is small, and there's, you know, like, trees, telephone poles that you may have to go one side or the other, maybe, most people would probably step in the streets.
Yeah.
That is my only issue. Other issues that probably, like the distance, non-compliance, I, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Mm-hmm.
But the safety, and you know that, um, fraternities do have fun sometimes.
Well, Mr. Rogers.
And I'm not sure that all of them be in compliance on their walk.
Yeah, and staff does acknowledge that there is a safety concern with a pedestrian access, 'cause there's no sidewalk, there's no crosswalks, there's no designated pedestrian pathway from the one to the other. Um, and we talked about this with, with the applicant, um, be- before and after the meeting, and, um, one of the things, and they can speak, um, on their behalf as well, but they, they don't anticipate the parking off-site actually being utilized. They actually anticipate all the parking to be onsite, um, based on, based on their current model and kind of the, um, attendance that they have today. Now, of course, our parking ratios, you know, they have to provide the off-site parking in order to meet the letter of the law, but in, in reality, they don't anticipate that based on their current model and what they see as far as, um, attendance at these meetings. Now, that being said, um, staff does, does agree that you're right, there, there is a concern with the pedestrian access. There could be additional signage, um, that could be provided to help mitigate some of that. Um, there does appear to be adequate lighting, but, but yes, um, and staff, and council should take that into consideration in their, in their, um, decision.
Because of the times that they meet, I wouldn't think, I think it's, I don't think a speed bump would necessarily be, um, a so- a part of a solution, but I, I would be very in favor of additional lighting and signage. Um, what are you?
I'm curious, what are the typical meetings held? Is it a Monday, Tuesday?
Um, I can let the applicant speak on, on behalf.
Okay. No, please come up and, uh,
Approach or just one?
Of cour- well, I don't, I think you could both approach. It's okay with me. Yeah, we just need your name and, and address, please.
Absolutely.
Uh, my name is Vince Beard. I'm the alumni, uh, for Thaddeus High Fraternity, and I was, um, lovely to be part of the, the Housing Committee, I guess by default, 'cause I live here.
Right.
But this is Christian Smith, so he is the president, so I'll let any specifics about times and stuff that I can talk about the housing side of it on the alumni.
Okay.
Yeah, um, yeah, like you said, my name's Christian Smith, I'm the president.
Need your address, please.
Uh, 17 and 10 East Star Avenue.
Okay.
Um, the, our normal meeting time is Sunday at 5:00. Uh, on average, we don't, we have, we have 42 active brothers right now. We usually have like 25 show up, so, uh, if that gives you like a better idea, like, of the amount of parking we use.
Okay, s- but, okay. So you would own, that's when your meetings are, but you would have other times you would be using it also?
Uh, the residents would ju- or the residents would use it, yes ma'am, like, just during the week, like, whenever they're there.
Okay. Any other questions?
My, my thought was if it's for, say, Saturday night parties, that kind of thing, that, that walk is, uh, certainly it's a little bit of a stretch, but also it's pretty packed in there. Depending on the time, I'd imagine by the time Annie Passe's shuts down, then it's pretty well vacated at that point, but, uh, that, that was my only thought, is if it's a frequent Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, uh, where you have your consistent meetings or something, that would be more concerning, but.
Right, guard, guard, it's, it's only, you know, they, they have their meetings once a week, you know, at that, and, you know, we just want, um, the house is Harland's Brooks' is old bed and breakfast, and if you can only imagine, you know, their meeting room is basically their living room, and it does kind of flow out into the back porch area. Um, so we just wanna get these guys something, a little bit more sheltered, a little bit more confined, you know, it's only 700 square feet, you know, that we're building. We're not building a, a huge dance hall, Banedick Recall, you know, part two kind of deal. Uh, but we just wanna have something really nice and presentable, um, also with that. And we do own the property that's surrounding that, that, um, I believe it's 16 acres, um, around that, so, um, you know, I am here, you know, live here, so anything that goes down with the guys, you know, I usually hear about it, so. And then we also said that we would pay for signage, um, that, um, the city would, you know, install, 'cause I know there's different codes and right-of-ways and stuff like that, but, um, as a fraternity and alumni association, we will front the cost of, of new signage, um, to be, um, placed on both sides. And I believe there's crossbucks that are there for the railroad, um, and if we have to upgrade our lighting situation there at the entrance or something like that, we'll be more than happy to look into that also.
Okay. I think, I don't see that we have any problem with the zoning or what you wanna do. Our primary concern is their safety.
Right, uh, yeah.
And that's, I think that's where our, our concerns are. Um, Jay?
How many, um, additional parking spaces are you all proposing, um, with the expansion?
Um, I don't, 27.
27 additional?
Right.
Okay.
Right, 'cause we kind of worked the numbers, I mean, if, if we went fit, I mean, it's gonna cost, we're gonna have Walmart parking lot, um, you know, with the current, you know, um, zoning right now.
Sure.
And looking at that graph, um, that she had, it's, it's kind of shocking, 'cause that's the first time I've seen that, of other schools, you know, someone don't even have any. Um, so, you know, we're trying to do the right thing and talk to Mr. DeWitt, um, about that, and like you said, m- more than likely, yes, we'll probably overflow some, but majority of the time, it, it probably won't be used, you know, with that.
Well, we understand that too. However, a, a decision like this is also made for the future, and so.
Yeah. Absolutely.
So, okay. So any other questions for them right now?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, do you, does anyone have any other questions for Ms. Chafin?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Um, the signage, does that, is that something that has to be decided tonight, or is that something we can leave to you to do in a manner that, uh, you know, I guess is, I can't think of the, the word, very protective, you know, as much as we can do that is safe?
I think the, and, and I might defer to our city attorney for more detail, but you can impose physical conditions on the specific u- use permit in order to satisfy the criteria, and it does talk about safety and parking and things of that nature. Um, you could dictate the, the number of, uh, pedestrian signs, or you could, I think you can really dictate pa- pa- pedestrian signs of so many as long as they meet the required spacing per our construction design standards, or something to that effect to where you were requiring the pedestrian signage, but it would be in accordance with our current codes, if, if, if that makes sense.
That makes sense. Just, I, I would like to know what our options are.
Mm-hmm. And, um, our city engineers here as well, I'm not sure if we know off, offhand the actually spacing that's required between pedestrian signage, I'm not sure that there is one, um, and so that's something that we could evaluate. They do have a site plan in that's under review currently, um, and that's something that could be amended to include this pedestrian signage and, um, have a note to be installed by city staff prior to the cer- issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Do you have any comments? Well, you always have a comment. What a crazy question.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, uh, council members, brace yourself, I have brought the big book. Um, I think we find our, uh, our answer to the question in Chapter 118. Uh, there are various, uh, subparts, uh, that address what your options are. It's a very good question, so you could approve it as presented. Uh, I think because of the nature-
I think because of the nature of this, it's SUP, that you could approve with conditions. I think traditionally in Atlanta, Ms. Jay can straighten me out on this, that often that would be conditions you place on the property itself, but I don't know necessarily that wouldn't mean that you couldn't. Okay, so I guess we could address that as well. I would point out two more things before I sit down, or if there's certainly any other questions. If you do deny it, and I'm not, certainly not influencing one way or the other, or attempting to do so, I would remind you that there are different distinctions. There's denial with prejudice. If you do that, then an advocate couldn't come back, I believe, for a year?
I believe so. Unless there's some significant...
Unless there's significant changes. Or you could deny without prejudice, at which point they could come back without those significant changes within a year. If you don't make a distinction between the two, then it is deemed to be denied with prejudice.
Thank you. Or any, does anyone have a question or need any further clarification?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
You mean to him or to him?
To him, just to him.
Oh, to him. I don't want to talk to him.
You don't want to talk to him? Okay.
I do have a question. I mean, there's a lot of property that's unimproved in this. Are you going to that?
I'm just trying to show a slide that shows there, there we go. That's, there we go.
Why did they not make parking area in some of the property that is unimproved?
Some of that property, and I wish I had a pointer, is owned by the railroad and has limited access because of that. If you look between 312 Old Tyler Road on the right side and where that shared parking is to the south, there are structures right there at 300 and 306. There appear to be small residential structures. And so that side, the east side, between the shared parking area and the fraternity house is developed. On the west side, it's the area between the fraternity house and the restaurant areas essentially railroad. So for all intents and purposes, I think we could say that it is developed as much as it could be based on onsite constraints.
I have a question. 16 acres, I mean, is the shared parking to reduce their expense?
I can let the applicant speak to that.
I mean, I would think that that's probably not, you might not have been finished, and I apologize. You should answer that. Okay, you're fine.
I imagine, and I can let the applicant speak, and that, I imagine that's part of it. There's also some significant grading on this lot, so that, so there's some, there's some topographic issues. And there's floodplain, and so all of that comes into play as far as cost and impact and things of that nature, but...
You said it was a little more than 500 feet. What's the actual distance?
The actual distance between the structure on the lot and the shared parking is approximately 700 feet. So it exceeds, it exceeds the maximum of about 200 feet.
How would you suggest we craft a motion, if someone wanted to make the motion for the approval, with the addition of as much as we can get in there for safety?
Well...
And what would that include?
Okay, I will take a crack at that. Jeff, please correct me. So you could make a recommendation to approve the specific use permit as presented with the condition that the applicant provide additional pedestrian signage of no more than two signs per standard streetscaping, or three signs as may be applicable per streetscape, you know, street spacing, or something, something to that effect. Does that make sense? What do you think, Mr. City Attorney?
That was a council member, I believe, that that motion, that that motion could be made?
No, no, of course, it has to come in. But if you take that walk from the parking lot to the location, it's not a smooth walk. Even the grass area that you're going to walk on is slanted slightly. So it's really basically, even if you hadn't been partying, it's not that easy of a walk. So that, the only concern about this whole thing is that the safety of the individuals walking from the extended parking lot unto the building itself, that's my only concern.
Kindly, I'm not super concerned. It's 700 feet, not 7,000, so you can only pack so many people in there. And so I absolutely understand the desire to want to limit to 27 parking spots. Parking absolutely is expensive, and so if you're only going to park 25 or 30 people, I'd imagine in practice, they're going to park in the grass more often than not. I like signs, but I think people get numb to them, honestly. But if we want to put, propose to put two signs on, in that little stretch, then I've certainly got no problem with that.
The signs are reflective, and so at night, if there are cars traveling, they do provide some additional reflection and additional lighting and glare, and so I think...
I'd like them to have lasers.
I think, I think it could improve the pedestrian environment by bringing more attention to the area.
As the chief probably would note, people ignore signs, speed limits. Come to a complete stop, turn right, signs are ignored on a daily basis. And especially people that's so used to going in this area, especially at night. And there's a curve too, which is another part of the equation.
The council could also approve the specific use permit with a condition that they provide additional parking. I mean, that's another physical condition that the council could impose on the specific use permit. And so it's not just deny or additional lighting. It's, there's other physical improvements, such as additional parking onsite, that could be a part of the approval of the specific use permit.
Any thoughts?
I'm comfortable as long as we do require the signage with or without lasers.
I can't wait to see, hear this motion. Are you okay? Any other questions, comments?
I'm too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, Chair, if there's no further discussion, Chair will entertain a motion.
I'd like a motion to approve the specific use permit as it's presented with the addition of two pedestrian street signs with the locations determined by staff. Is that reasonable, Mr. City Attorney?
I think that will work.
Okay. We need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion wise, I just have a question. You said two additional signs.
Pedestrian street signs.
Yes, so just two signs. Because we had, there was also some talk about...
A third?
No. I just wanted to make sure, make sure that's what you meant to say, because I think there was also the conversation about two per whatever. I don't know what that, I don't even recall what that was. So that's fine. Two is fine. I'm good with that. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Agenda item number 11, consider ordinance, amending ordinance number 1808-9-19. And that is Mr. Bartlet.
Good evening, Steve Bartlet, City Engineer. Have tonight for your consideration the adoption of a budget amendment, which will basically authorize both a revenue component and then an expense component for funds relating to a upcoming household hazardous waste collection event. So we had scheduled, or we have scheduled, a household waste collection event for April 25th, be held at the exposition center, basically outside in their parking area, so we've been looking at that. This is really a collaborative effort between not just the city, but Nacogdoches County, who's of course providing the venue, DetCog, who is providing us a grant I'll tell you about, Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful, who will also be providing technology collections, as well as a vendor for televisions, which is a big need. The Pinewood RC&amp;D, who is also awarding us grant monies to do this, and the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, TCQ. So we are all collaborating together. So this, as you can imagine, that is just a different way of saying we've had about 20 meetings, so. Pinewood's RC&amp;D, again, has awarded us $25,000. They approached us several months ago and said they have this available for a household hazardous waste collection event. They also came across an additional $2,500 that'll be targeted towards tire disposal, which will happen at the same event. So they've got both of those funds for us. DetCog has an annual grants program, and we have applied for and received for the last several years. And we applied this year for funds for a household hazardous waste event to complement these monies from Pinewood's RC&amp;D. And we were selected for a $13,000 grant award for that. That grant, the paperwork for that is in progress. It's been approved and the contracts are on their way, so, but we're 100% confident that that will come to fruition very shortly. It is pending final commission approval in Austin. So TCQ provides those funds. DetCog manages those funds and oversees the grants, so there's some process there that's going on. The city's also requested a supplemental environmental project, which is a really nice word for a fine that we had to pay for a sewer overflow in 2018 that landed in a private pond, killed some fish, and we were fined a total of $7,851. In lieu of paying that fine, we can request a supplemental environmental event to a third-party vendor. We requested that go to Pinewood's, or to RC&amp;D, Texas RC&amp;D, which then we've hopefully been assured that that will also be able to come back to us for this event. So when you, you see, we've got kind of a collage of money that we put together for this event. So why are we coming to you tonight? One reason is the $13,000 from DetCog we actually have to receive, and as you know, we've got to amend our budget to receive both revenues or handle expenditures. So part of this is the receipt of those monies. But we're also coming to you tonight to ask to be able to use funds that are surplus or additional above, I say surplus, but above our reserves in the sanitation fund. So as we met with the vendor who handles this hassle, excuse me, household hazardous waste, what he told us is you guys have never done this before. And so there's, you're going to have a lot of friends that morning. And so we, he is expecting that in a four-hour period, we could amass $60,000 worth of disposal. So as you can see, we didn't have quite those funds. So we originally approached Rod Hogan about the possibility of coming to you for a $30,000 capture of additional funds from our surplus, and we have now upped that to 50, only because we're worried that maybe the DetCog grant in this won't get timed out for our April 25th event. So it gives us a little contingency room. Our request is a not-to-exceed amount. We'll use what we need to have it. So here's what we envision, is we have a very successful event, and the vendor says we're at $63,422, we're closing the gate, there's 20 people lined up, and we still have waste to dispose of. We basically need access to some funds to try to finish that event out. And so we think it's a great event. This keeps this waste out of the landfill. It keeps the tires out of stacked next to dumpsters all over town, and it keeps these chemicals out of the streams. And it's, it's all good. It's a no downside deal. We just haven't had one. So like I say, I think there's going to be a lot of paints and chemicals that come to us. So I will tell you that the sanitation fund has more than adequate funds to support this. As you recall, several months ago, we approached you about a new program we were doing with our landfill that was going to delay the construction of some cells for five to seven years that we would, we've been saving for. And so we have significantly more money than we're asking for in this budget amendment available. I'd be happy to go through those numbers with you if you wish. But I'm telling you, there's more than adequate funds above reserves to fund this, so. I'm not sure if I've left something out. I'm tall in here, so. I think, oh, yes. So the 13,000 comes to us, but all the other funds come right through Pinewood's RC&amp;D. So that's why you don't see all that money being treated as revenue. They hired the vendor, they write the checks. We don't ever touch the money. The DetCog money is the only thing that we have to receive as actual revenue. That's why I tell you we've got all this money coming, but we're not actually going to handle it for the waste event, so. Anyway, we're real pleased. Everybody's joined together. I think this will be a great event, and I'm hoping things don't change that in our current circumstances. So right now, we are not canceling the event. We're just moving forward. After public comment, Mayor will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that has a comment? Okay. None? Counsel, questions?
Ballpark, how much antifreeze are we going to dispose of for 60,000 bucks? I mean, when they, when they say 60,000 and they have the clue, they're... Yeah, I'm curious how they tabulate that.
He has given us an estimate based on historical averages of other cities, so it's not per gallon, because realize we're talking about pesticides, insecticides, methyl, ethyl death stuff, you know, batteries, aerosol cans, asbestos, antifreeze is one of them. So we haven't quantified it by number of gallons. He's just saying a community like yours will typically generate, you know, on this $15,000 an hour, $20,000 an hour of disposal costs, so.
God, so it's by the hour?
Well, it's by the quantity, but they, they basically bring a whole staff, and they're certified collection people, and so they bring a staff. We provide, in this case, we're going to try to provide about 20 volunteers. Jeff Davis will be wearing a moon suit, so come and see. And they basically have somebody tabulating. So we have six paint cans of this much, and we have a quart of pesticides, and they're tabulating this, and those relate to dollars. Can't tell you honestly exactly. Be happy to try to get that information. He's just warning us that we'll tell you when you're close, you have to close the gate when you get to your budget, basically. We'll give you that warning. He's just said $30,000, we're going to close the gate in two hours. And that's kind of where we were, how we started the event, thinking that was adequate. And so that's why we're here, is we think we'd like to go the four to five hours that we're advertising. And so we just think it's going to take additional funds. So if we don't spend all the 50, we can do however you direct. We can leave it at that, or we can have a subsequent event or a tire collection event. I can collect waste all day long, as long as you help me fund it. So it just depends on how you direct me to use it. Long answer to a short question, sorry.
I love the event. I was just curious if it's one or two dump, dump trucks worth of nasty stuff that we don't really want in the landfill, so that's, that's great.
It's usually going to be pretty large quantities, everything from batteries to, like you say.
That's great.
So this is not electronic disposal?
Yes, because we're, we're expanding it. Some of the communities, in fact, Lufkin's going to do a similar one, and they got a DetCog grant for the same thing. And they can, you can, can or not, or not can have different stuff. Thank you for that, see? It's been a long day. So in this case, we decided to partner with KMB for two reasons. One is they can get volunteers for us. They're great at that. And secondly, they have the electronics recycling trailer, Councilman, and so we've asked them to come and provide that. So we're kind of looking for the one-stop-shop. Subception to that is, you know, brushing waste like that, we're not taking, we're going to show them where the landfill is across the street. And we're also not going to take waste oil, which normally is taken at these, because immediately across the street, we have our own waste oil depository, so we're just, we'll just redirect folks. But yes, electronics, and in this case, televisions, which normally KMB does not take. Those are about a $15 apiece disposal average, and they're head-cooking us up with the vendor, and we'll have a separate bin to throw those in.
And, okay.
So cross your fingers it doesn't rain, and we don't have other complications.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item number 11. 11? Yeah, 11, as it is written.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, we approve agenda item number 11 as written. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. And number 12, consider approval of a chapter 380 agreement.
Ms. Phil Potte. Good evening. Good evening. Commissioners Laura S. Phil Potte, Economic Development Director. I'm going to keep it short so we can all get out of here quickly, and Dr. Hirsch can get back home to his wife and his baby. I thank him for being here tonight. The data for this project and agreement is available in your packet. We did talk about this in your last executive session, so I'm not going to go through that information again. Please feel free to ask a question, though. I do want to point out the purpose of this agreement is to accelerate development of a Phase II. On a regular basis, I discuss incentive agreements with prospects, typically out-of-town prospects, and this particular agreement is an opportunity for us to work with two local families who are investing in the community and hopefully speed up a Phase II of a nice large project for the Nacogdoches community. And in light of very uncertain economic times, I think this is especially appropriate for us. With that, I will step aside and leave it open for a public comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone that has a comment, would like to say anything about this? Nope? Counsel, any questions?
Sure, just for the sake of getting it on record so people can understand, like, how these work, I'd be curious if you wouldn't mind laying out the last two, three years, how many of these do we typically do in a given year, and what is the process? So they would approach you, they, then it comes before council, we discuss it, then you go back and forth, and you wouldn't mind just briefly...
You did that perfectly.
You did that perfectly. And just including this one, in the last two years, we've only had two agreements. We do discuss them all the time, though. It's always on the list when someone calls, a big project, they want to talk about it. To be perfectly honest, even though we have a lot of discussions about tax rates and tax bills, in lieu of not having a four A, four B fund, tax abatements are about all we can give. And when you look at what a tax bill is for a typical project, it's a tax abatement is not a huge windfall for them. And so typically what happens is it gets brought up, we go through what the performance agreement requirements would be, and the reporting and things like that, and either the project doesn't make sometimes, and so that's why you wouldn't hear it, or there's just, it's, there's just not enough of an impact on the project to continue with a three-eighty agreement with them. So anytime it makes sense and it's beneficial to actually land the project here, we bring it to you. But often, it just doesn't make it to this point.
Thank you.
And that's only on new construction?
It is, it is typically on new construction. On this one, for example, it is an abatement for phase one, so that we can inject capital into phase two essentially.
Okay.
Which is phase one is new construction, it is just nearing completion.
Okay, anything else?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I need to move?
I've got some. No, let's just get through it. Chair will entertain a motion.